Either. Or physically present. So looking to establish a forum. It's going to call the order. I note the expected absence of Supervisor Price, she had informed us that she wasn't going to be available for this meeting. I also note online Supervisor Andrews. Who we've already ascertained can hear us and we can hear him. Jim, would you like to entreat the authority to allow you to participate?
Yes, I would. I would like to participate for a family event remotely here. I am in Sorrento, Maine.
All those in favor of voting him into the meeting, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, Jim, you are added to our list of participants.
Thank you.
Of course. If at any time I'm sounding a little too muffled and you need me to repeat something, please don't hesitate. That goes to the folks here in the room as well. I apologize. But it is a necessity. So next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Has everyone had the opportunity necessary to review the agenda? Any questions or comments about that? There a motion to approve the agenda? Second? All those in favor, say aye. Hearing none, agenda is approved. Now we'll go to brief announcements by authority members. Jim, let me start with you because you're not in the room.
And I have no announcements. Thank you.
Trevor, Mr. Bill. Waldo. For my part, sitting here on day eight or nine of COVID and expecting as the CDC claims my N ninety-five mask. And some distance to protect all of you. And thank you for asking. I'm feeling much better. That takes us on to the public comment period. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the authority? There are none in the room. But are we have any online?
We have five people online share. Anybody that would like to offer a public comment, please use the raise hand feature. No hands are raised.
All right. Well, thank you all for joining us today. And we'll move on. Next item is our consent agenda. I trust everyone's had the opportunity to review that. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, that carries. So on June the twenty-eighth, we did not have a meeting. And after some discussion, the secretary and I decided maybe we should just have minutes that say we didn't have a meeting for the purpose of. A complete record so someone doesn't get stopped looking for meeting minutes that don't exist. Which is why we have the approval of no meeting minutes. And July twenty-sixth, meeting minutes, Bill?
Neither the no minutes or the July twenty-sixth minutes have been prepared.
So I would not ask the authority to vote on those at this time. But I trust we can have them for our next meeting.
Okay, they were there. We're almost done. I just want to direct it to give you a date of the new.
Thank you very much. On the topic of minutes, when trying to look up something a week or so ago, I took note of the fact that our minutes from this year's meetings. Were not yet online. And so I've asked Mike and Jason to work on that and it's in progress.
I will be addressing that by the by Monday. At close of business.
So we'll we'll get caught up to date with our online minutes. Yes, sir.
Zach and I have a link to the recordings also.
And we continue to maintain two separate documents, one with the minutes and one with the link to the recordings.
Quick question, are we posting the draft minutes?
I only post approved minutes.
Which in the normal course of business, we would get out in a timely fashion. Today notwithstanding as an example of that. We okay, Richie?
Consider it after the meeting.
Okay. Very good. That takes us to number seven, election of officers. This being our annual meeting. It falls to us to elect. For a nominal one-year term, all the officers that the broadband authority has. Annually, this is the opportunity where you get the chance to say you'd like to be chairman. And then we would vote for you to be the chairman. And then so forth and so on down the list of office. Annually, this has failed to elicit any suggestion of someone wants to run. So it is with a heavy heart, I I ask once again, is there anyone else who'd like to run for chairman? Jim, I'm sorry, we can't hear you at the moment. Did you say something? No.
Jim, if you can't see us, no one is making eye contact or bucky right now, so.
Let me come at this a different way. Are all the people who are currently in officer positions willing to serve in those positions again? Say so if you are not. Then let me suggest that we reelect everyone to their current office. So moved. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, all the poor unfortunates are still in their current roles. This year you'll be getting the additional stipend. The next is to establish a schedule for regular meetings, something we do at this meeting. We've been working on the fourth Wednesday. Of the month principle, recognizing that November and December, that fails rather atrociously. We had had some discussion on the topic of did we need to have monthly meetings? And I think the the outcome of that discussion was it is easier to calendar a meeting that we decide we have no business for and cancel in advance. Than it is to schedule a meeting that we didn't calendar. So I think our plan is to go ahead and calendar whatever it is, eleven. Ten, eleven meetings here. Based on the fourth Wednesday principle. With what's the suggestion for the December date? We're trying to blend November and December of this year into one meeting. We did that very successfully last year in the early part of the month.
On the screen, we have the calendar for December, the county calendar, and I believe the fifth and the twelfth would be acceptable. I believe last year we used the first Tuesday of December, which I believe that was the fourth last year.
How does the first Tuesday sound of December sound as a? Meeting made. Any objections or concerns about that?
Any planning commission? There's always a chance of planning commission on those dates. That's what happened last year. And if I have to go, I'll miss the meeting. With this much head time, it's likely I can schedule.
Unfortunately.
It's fine. December fifth.
So the agenda we're looking at is the fourth Wednesday of the month through next August, with the exception of November and December of this year, where we would need just one meeting on December the fifth. And they would all normally be at five o'clock. And premises would probably be here barring something unfortunate. If that sounds acceptable, then I would move that agenda for next year's or this coming year's calendar. Is there a second? Sure. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? The schedule for our regular meeting. Earlier this year, we amended our rules of procedure to allow for a consent agenda. I'm not aware of any other proposals to amend the rules of procedure. At this time. It has been our habit, whether we change them or not, to readopt them at our annual meeting. Is there anything anyone wants to change in the rules? Looking at shaking heads? So I'll move to approve the rules of procedure. Second, readopt the rules of procedure, I guess that would be the proper proper term. And Trevor seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposition. Rules of procedure are reapproved. Readopted. And without further ado, that takes us to old business. It's twenty twenty-three and we're still getting a body twenty twenty-one update. Let's have it, Mike.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to. Allow the broadband authority to know that Stephen Brewer and Chris Dillon are online with us this evening. So if there are any questions for either of those two representatives that have been not to me of Brightspeed. That certainly we would. We would look forward to the opportunity to bring them along to address any questions from the broadband authority. And with that, I'll I'll turn it over to. Mr. Jason and Ina Fuentes to talk about a couple of things that he's put together, done a great job identifying locations yet to be served in our body twenty-one. Program. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you, Mike. So as and thank you, Chair and Authority. As you see on the slide, we had a chance to meet with Brightspeed yesterday. Brightspeed. Identified forty-one locations that we had previously identified as unserved. But should have been included in body twenty-one. Then it would serve with existing assets, no further construction needed, and those forty-one addresses should be live on the brightspeed.com site right now. They also with that then identified forty-six locations, which they do not intend to build at this moment. As a review. In October, in the fall of last year, we asked for a list of locations that Brightspeed intended to serve as part of this project. Particularly as we were entering the largest project areas and we were fielding lots of requests for clarity on whether. An address was or was not included. We received those lists for the Stony Point and Campbell Cobham areas in Keswick. And when we did, we identified a few issues. We immediately identified that there were some locations that were being submitted and built to that were outside of the project areas defined during the application process. And we also identified areas that did not appear to be included in the construction plans. We requested once again a complete list of all locations from Brightspeed. And as of now have not received such list. However, through consultation with DHCD. When we brought this to their attention, we suggested using the FCC's data that had recently been updated and released. To base our analysis of what locations remains to be built in the body twenty-one areas. What you see on the map right there, those red dots, those are all of the areas that we identified that should be included in the project. It should be noted that number adds up to about fifteen hundred and ninety-three locations. And those locations are. All within the project, not within any other project, not within any other grant funded project. We took the. Brightspeed was able to provide us with some proprietary network information from which we were able to identify locations that network facilities did not appear to be serving. And that was the list that we sent them of approximately eighty-seven locations. They. Looked at that list and did their own analysis. And what they came up with is what you see here. The yellow dots are locations that they've identified as not on the original list, which should note, we still haven't seen this list. But they now have access to it. And the green are the locations that they identified that were on the original list. And for which they believe they have sufficient. Infrastructure to serve. And so those are the forty-one look forty, I'm sorry, thirty-seven locations that they are saying now that they will serve. There are four of the yellow dots. We're not certain which ones they are that they will serve. And then there's a lone orange dot in the northern portion of the twenty project area. That was on the original list. There has not been. Infrastructure built out to it yet. And so they are not planning on building to those locations. As part of our initial analysis, once we received this information. And not wanting to publicly discuss proprietary network information, we did analysis where we just looked at how close. These unserved locations were to other served locations and we set the threshold at six hundred and fifty feet. And a hundred percent of them are within six hundred and fifty feet of a different location that has been served.
And you were looking at where the residence is or where the driveway is or where the.
These are, these are our building structures. So the FCC points are at the location of the building. We previously were trying to use parcels and then buildings, but it was hard to identify which one of those was a barn or a garage or a home. So these FCC points are are where the serviceable location is.
Jason, is this how you got to that forty-one number?
That's how they got to forty-one.
That's within the six hundred and fifty feet?
So no, we don't know. So the green ones. Going back side, the green ones are ones that should have already always been included.
Yes.
And as you can tell, most of the green ones are sort of clustered together. They. Have enough infrastructure, they believe, to just go ahead and serve those. They have designated those as being within six hundred and fifty feet of fiber infrastructure.
So that's the forty-one.
That's the, that's thirty-seven of them.
Thirty-seven, okay.
There are four in the yellow, so four not on the original list.
Right.
Which they believe. They can serve and they're going to go ahead and add those as well. We did an analysis just to get sort of an overall idea that we could share with others. When we started to zoom in on individual areas, what we saw were three conditions that cover all of these locations. That to us. Merit consideration that Brightspeed still needs to build to these locations. The first condition is that they are proximal to existing assets and locations that are currently served. Here, this is an area from the Gilbert Station project area, the northern piece. And you see there are four yellow. Dots that are adjacent to areas that are served. In fact, they're intermingled with areas that are served. There is a lone. Yellow dot off to the left, and certainly there's an argument to be made that that should not have been included, and that's the argument that Brightspeed is making. However, we also note that that is not outside of the realm of a long drop that we've seen. So again, that's one condition. The second condition is most notably in a Gilbert Station area. At the southern end of Gilbert Station, where there are approximately twelve serviceable locations that DHCD has identified as a priority. These are locations that. Would need construction. We identified about a mile of lateral that would need to be laid in order to reach these locations. PHD on the call yesterday specifically said that they believe that they have not seen evidence that. Right speech shouldn't build to these locations. And then the third condition is. Situations where. Brightspeed is the carrier of last resort. As on this map, you see a number of locations that are served and then a lone yellow location that is fairly off of Lonesome Mountain Road. That is certainly a location that would. Would merit strong consideration for special construction costs. However, any suggestion that a different provider should be funded. To build along the full length of Lonesome Mountain Road to serve that one location would be, I think, an imprudent use of public funds. And so. That's all of the locations. And we're happy to answer questions and also if you'd like to ask questions specifically to Mr. Brewer or Mr. Dillon from Brightspeed, they're available.
I'd like a, just a clarification on something you said. So. Brightspeed initially said, we're not going to serve these eighty-one, was that the number? These eighty-seven locations. And then upon further consideration. Agreed that thirty-seven of them are actually close enough that they really should serve them.
And that they were included in.
And that they should.
In their original plans that we have not seen.
Okay. So I'm going to state this back to you just to make so that I'm perfectly clear on it. We had an agreement that they were going to serve. A much larger number of properties.
One thousand six hundred and seventy-five.
Of course, you know, these numbers off the top of your head. They fell short by. Let's just look at the. Thirty-seven of them right now. And we said, but you agreed to do them. And they said, I don't think we did. And you said, no, seriously, you really did. And they said, okay, yeah, you're right. We did. Do I have that basically correct?
That is an accurate summary.
Okay, it's just weird that we have to twist their arm to do a thing that they said that they would do. That's, I guess, my basic observation here. Thank you for allowing me to understand that better.
To make sure I. Completely understand. Are all the yellow, orange, blue, red dots, et cetera, that we've that we've seen today, are they all within the original polygons?
Yes, sir.
So there's really not any question that these were within the to be served. Area that we went to contract for. At least not from our standpoint.
Based on our understanding, yes.
Okay.
What's DHCD's position on this?
DHCD has made affirmative statement that they want Brightspeed to at minimum build the Gilbert Station area. And given again, the proximity of the other yellow dots. To with most of the other yellow dots to existing served locations, we believe that it should not be a considerable. Infrastructure need to serve the remaining locations, or serve those remaining locations for those that are. Considerably long drops. I think that there's certainly. Conversation to be had about those drops. But we believe that Brightspeed remains the carrier of last resort for those locations.
Does this have a term carrier of last resort? Does it have some, is that a term of art?
That is a term of art that is actually. Covers telecommunications and electrical infrastructure. It is not widely used in broadband and is not legally accepted in broadband, but it is the appropriate term in this situation.
Okay, so. Again, stating back a thing I think we all know, but making sure that I've got it right, we have. Brightspeed, among others, has shifted telecommunications from copper to voice. And thus is shedding their obligations under State Corporation Commission and FCC regulations to be things like a carry of last resort. Leaving people eventually without that service because of the lack of copper service. While not being obliged to serve them because regulations don't cover broadband because that doesn't include voice service. Do I have that right?
I think the fine detail on their intent isn't something that I can, I can address. I can say Brightspeed of late has expressed a commitment to maintaining copper telephony service, including allowing new fiber customers to maintain their pots lines.
Yeah.
Which is an encouraging development.
Okay. So if somebody were to get new, maybe we don't know this yet. Maybe it's outside of the scope of our work. But if somebody were to have new construction that is only served by fiber. And then they said, you know what, I'd like a copper line. They would. Have that run to their house a year or two later?
I would be happy to present that to Brightspeed as a question, if you'd like to ask it directly to Mr. Brewer or Mr. Dillon, they are available.
I would, I would be delighted to get an answer.
Yeah, and Mr. Brewer has his hand up as well, so. Mr. Brewer, if you would unmute.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. In regards to your question about. New copper. Being, or excuse me, about copper being run to a new facility. Honestly, I would need to. Get a response from our construction team. Sorry, there's an echo here. So. Regarding the presentation that Mr. Ina Fuentes did, I would say that I do disagree with some points that were made. First of all. The one hundred percent being within six hundred and fifty feet. Of locations that have been served. That that may or may not be true from our perspective. However. The critical point is it being within six hundred and fifty feet of a serving terminal, not from a location that already has service. And as I indicated to them earlier today, regarding the Gilbert Station, right, our team is doing an analysis of what it would take to serve those ten to twelve homes. As it pertains to carrier of last resort, carrier of the last resort is exclusive to telephone service and it does not have, it does not play a role in the broadband world. But again, I will be happy to get you a a response on. On our policy regarding new construction when the area is also served by copper.
That would be great. Thank you.
And and let me make one other point. Regarding the. Original eighty-seven priority areas. And again, we've had Rich Shulman retire, so I was not directly involved in this project. At the time of his retirement, but regarding those eighty-seven locations. It's my understanding that those locations were provided to us as priority areas or priority locations where there was some concern that they had not been served. When we did analysis of them, many of, many of the forty-one were already loaded into brightspeed.com. We also found additional four locations that were not on the original planning list that were amongst. Pardon me, that were amongst the eighty-seven that we believe that were close enough to our facilities and. Our construction manager has already had those loaded or is in the process of getting them loaded into our. Our system that enables the customer to go on brightspeed.com and order those services. So there are. Of the eighty-seven, forty-one have been satisfied. There are forty-six right now that are in question, as I indicated earlier. Our team is doing an analysis. To determine the cost to serve the ten to twelve off of the Gilbert Station Road that Mr. Ina Fuentes had identified. And we should have that in very short order. But the remaining locations were not, were not part of. The original application list of addresses that were used to identify the cost associated with building this project. And that's why they were not built to in this instance. I'll be happy to answer any additional questions.
I don't have any further questions. It doesn't sound like we have complete agreement on that topic, but I don't think this is the forum to hash that question out. Mike, did you want to cover the financial aspects?
Yeah, I'll take that. Thanks, Jason. It's important to realize that. Anything that is outside of the original polygons is not reimbursable. So that means fiber that was built to locations that were outside the polygons. Any infrastructure that was put into place to specifically serve. Locations outside the polygons will not be reimbursed. So there's going to be a detailed analysis of what's inside the polygon. And addresses that aren't billed to within the polygons. The polygons are the point of reference for everyone. They are. Subject to reimbursement to another provider. So if. Brightspeed decides not to build to any of the locations that are within the polygon, so what we're talking about here are what's in our yellow today. If they decide, they still have an opportunity to to build to those locations and give us a, give us a plan that shows that they plan to do it. If they don't. Then. The money is is subject to. Someone else, a different provider. Our plan is to make sure that these people are, these locations are not left out. So there is a, there is a. Requirement that Brightspeed put together a financial plan that indicates whether or not they're going to build to the locations in the polygons. If they decide not to, then that lowers the amount of reimbursement that they can receive from the state. So it's clear to everyone, the polygon is the reference point. Locations in the polygon are subject to. Other ISPs if Brightspeed decides not to build to them.
I've got a related question. So. The areas in those polygons are spoken for. And. At what point are they then, for any unserved property within those polygons, at what point are they? Released so that other funding could be used to serve those individuals?
So. We saw guidance from DHCD on that. When the bead challenge process begins, the state's going to release a list of all locations that they've identified as unserved. We have an opportunity to challenge in the event that any of these locations by the time of that release are not taken care of, or there is not a plan. And we are pursuing alternatives, then DHCD has stated that they would allow us to submit a challenge. For those locations and we'll, Brightspeed agree. For those locations and will Brightspeed agrees to not rebut our challenge. Thank you.
Is there any ambiguity or disagreement on the polygons themselves between D H C D, the county and Brightspeed?
These were all agreed upon by all parties.
There's zero ambiguity. R doc did not impact these.
These are the post-rescope polygons, so they represent the final application. After the rescope.
And I I guess I would have to argue that there is some disagreement about the polygon.
Is there anything else we need to take up at this time on this topic?
I I have a one follow-up question about this. Because we've seen for the last couple of years now, a series of. New businesses and new people associated with CenturyLink, Lumen, Brightspeed, whatever the other name has been, Quantum Fiber. Who say, well, I'm new here, so I don't really know what's going on, but the last person, I don't know what he told you, but here's what's happening now. So I want to make sure that although we've been told by Brightspeed, well, we're not gonna, you know, challenge your challenge. About those unserved properties and that polygons and those polygons. Can we get that in writing? Is that a thing?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to be able to say we're agreeing, these are the addresses in these polygons that you're saying, Brightspeed, that you're not going to serve. Can you agree to that? Give us something in writing so that that way, when we challenge it. To body as part of, I'm sorry, yeah, body as a part of the. Uh, B funding. That we can submit with that and here's the list that you can see Century, Brightspeed has agreed to.
Yeah, we have an email to that effect.
Okay.
Um, we can ask for further, if it comes to that, yes.
Okay, that would be great, because I would hate to just continue another round as we. Slice ever more finely the percentage of citizens that don't have service. I would hate for to have any of those folks left out.
And and Mr. Chair, to your, to your point. We continue to ask D H C D to adjudicate this going forward. So this is largely informational to present the information that we received yesterday and our analysis subsequent.
Very good. Please keep us apprised if news breaks in the interim between meetings. Of course, Jack, and it's very disappointing. To hear about these forty folks, forty plus folks who are just out in the cold right now.
And we received emails from in particular residents of Gilbert Station, three emails over the last week.
Sure, I'm sure you did. These are folks who thought they had something good coming. All right, body twenty-two.
Thank you, Chair. Twenty-two is moving along quickly. A lot of construction work that's going on. There have been. Several reports of locates slowing process down. That's both been for the C V I. Bill to their membership, meaning Firefly building to C V I membership, which is all complete now. And C V I fortunately has started work, Firefly has started work on the Red Hill area, so they are taking. Making active connections in the Red Hill Appalachian Power area. The locates, we have some indication that that is gradually improving with the potential of improving dramatically in October. Uh, I I neglected to say that both Gary Wood and Dennis Reese are online. If there are any questions for. Uh, Firefly and C V I represent representatives. So if the broadband authority would like to pose questions to either Gary Wood or Dennis Reese, they're both online with us. Now, our biggest challenge continues to be the Dominion work. There's a lot of work that has to happen. Over a hundred ninety-five miles of fiber needs to be built by Dominion, middle mile, what is called middle mile fiber. Not fiber that delivers directly to the consumer, but fiber that will be utilized by Firefly to get. Consumer traffic back to the internet and forward. So that that is working. Um, we have a schedule that hopefully is provided to us later this year. And as the authority knows, there was a request that came in from Dominion Energy. Uh, asking for a letter of support, a letter of support submitted to Dominion Energy. Submitting their continued work on this middle mile fiber. So that letter was sent around. Uh, via email and hopefully we can have approval from everyone on the broadband authority. No later than what has become September fourteenth. I think the email indicated September fifteenth, but. The request is to have that letter back to Dominion Energy by September fourteenth. And a copy of the current draft is included in your package.
Everyone had a chance to look at the letter? Anyone have any concerns or thoughts about the letter? We just go ahead and approve the notion of the letter, wordsmith as necessary to bring it to its final form?
Sure.
So all in favor?
Authorizing the chair sign.
Sure, author, you'd be to sign it on our behalf. There's second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move forward with that letter as we get it in its final form, but it shouldn't differ materially from where it is now. Anything else on body twenty-two?
Yep, we thank T J P D C. As the broadband authority is aware, T J P D C is the administrator of this. Significant project for Central Virginia. Glad to be a part of it.
And the next quarterly stakeholders meeting is actually on Monday. Might be some shuffling to get us attending, because Mike will actually be at the B A C. Um, we hope to report out as an act meeting from that stakeholder.
Good. Now, at our last meeting, you guys were teasing us with something that might happen in the interval. Is that what our next agenda item is?
It is, Chair, so replacing the body twenty-three, next step slide, we have our B A A O. A R P A grant. The.
More letters, we need, it's the G D, the grant discussion.
This project mirrors largely the body twenty-three, or this proposal, this grant proposal mirrors the body twenty-three. Uh, application in terms of locations, project area, the locations have come down. And a lot of that just comes from refining our awareness of where locations are served. Um, and we still have two million dollars, and that's we here representing the office of ARPA funding. That is secured towards this project and we are pursuing additional funding. Um, the project work is to be completed by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and it's important to note. This obligation, as soon as that we can. Uh, achieve that protects our ARPA funding from clawbacks and forfeiture. The passings count may, in in the final obligation. Um, address any remaining eligible locations or orphaned addresses from other projects. Uh, that will be determined. Closer to contract completion. We had requested letters of intent to be received by this past Monday. Um, we received partial proposals from Fiber Link and Nelson Cable. Um, and we received letters of intent for full proposals from Comcast and Firefly. Um, we've asked that complete applications be received no later than September fourth. Um, and the guidelines that we released, which you can find on our website, state a strong preference for complete proposals.
And so these proposals are, they're saying, yes, we will close some of the gaps that you have. So the the scope of work for each of these is pretty small.
Uh, for the, for the partial proposals, yes.
Is the model of this grant award, it would be a direct contract to the county? Unlike what has been done previously.
That correct, so this would be an agreement administered through the grants, grants and partnerships office. To award the ARPA funds and any other funds that. That that are contributed towards a contract with the provider themselves. Our office, along with grants, would handle all of the reporting requirements. All of our reporting requirements, the provider would still be required to do their portion.
So just so I'm understanding, because I didn't know that they would do this. Full proposals from Comcast means that they're interested in covering all of our little D S L circles?
They are reviewing the full proposal.
Okay. They just had an L O I saying, we're thinking about it. I'm surprised that they would even think about it. I did not know that they were, because. I mean, they're not going to do that with COAX, right? Like. Would be weird. I'm just, I'm amazed. Do we know Comcast to be in the fiber business now? Is that a thing they do?
Infrastructure is fiber. The ARPA proposals, much like last year's B proposals. Offer with prior approval of the Assistant Secretary and exemption from the one hundred over one hundred. Requirement for performance to one hundred over twenty. So certainly, they would need to have that exemption in hand. Um, at the point where they, were they to be awarded, they would have to have that exemption in hand. Given that they have received ARPA contracts in other states, I believe they already have that exemption in hand. Their infrastructure in terms of laterals and trunk lines is fiber-based. In most of their service areas, my understanding, the coaxial component is the very last component leading to that.
Do we have any say over, I appreciate that, like, somebody else has given them a waiver, but can we say, like, no, we don't care about your waiver?
We could have, the the ARPA guidelines, to my understanding. Allow the locality to. To kind of craft their own grant process. We could have carved it in such a way that we would only accept one hundred or over one hundred or. Fiber, however. Given the commitment to technology neutrality, that seemed like an inappropriate step to take at this stage.
What is your expected timeframe to move to make some sort of decision?
Um, we hope to be. Under an agreement in terms by the first week of, first, first full week of October, and we can kind of why in a moment.
This maybe I can. Handle this outside of a board meeting, it's really a question around procurement and direct contracting. My experience is, is, you know, through the capital side. Which is a longer path and a different process than awarding a grant. So I, I just, I. Has have those. As legal. Procurement risk all been kind of looped in that that this method of procurement and grant awarding is. Isn't in accordance with our procurement.
We have met with Mr. Delorean, Mr. Bassett, and. Uh, Ms. Gardner, and all are in agreement that this is an appropriate process for this ARPA funding. Um, and the statutory authority for this spending is established in the ARPA language, in the final S L F R F language.
How does our state procurement requirements fall into this, or do they not?
Um, so we have, there's a Virginia statute that allows us to participate in, in federal grant programs. This is a federal grant program. I don't profess to know all the details and Anthony Bassett is is more attuned to that. So he he has looked at it. And he's well aware of the process that Mr. Enno Fuentes has spoken of and he thinks it's a a fair process. He considers it to be a federal grant program. And he was satisfied with the, with the competitive arrangement that. That the office has gone through. We're also aware, as you raised, the notion that we'd be directly contracting. That does put us in a different situation. I'm not in a position to comment on how that affects the organization or the office. It is a significantly heavier lift than we've experienced before. I think in terms of my mind, we could use D H C D as the model.
Because it's such exciting work so far.
Um, and one thing to note on this slide, at the previous meeting, it was asked that we provide a little bit more clarity. Previously, we had just the blob of red and then the orange, and so we have a whole panoply of pastels mostly. That represent all of the existing project areas. And the dots, because I could not find actually a body twenty-one project area shapefile, represent body twenty-one. We are confident, should this complete proposal. Be fully funded and adopted, that we would be within. No more than a hundred and ninety, two hundred locations of universal access by the end of twenty twenty-five, should we succeed in this proposal.
Does that include the forty unfortunates from?
Uh, it does include, that 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 estimate of of about a hundred and ninety does include. Any potentially orphans passings from prior projects.
Well, I just wanted to suggest that when the. Procurement process is put together for this, that the lessons that I think we have all learned about the specificity that's required. When working with these, these companies be learned and brought to bear.
Um, I think that was a lesson taken at D H C D. All subsequent processes have required. At time of application, a list of locations to be served.
That's great. Glad to hear it.
Is there anything the authority can do to assist your effort?
I'll take that as a offer, Chair. Thank you for bringing out that specific.
Leaving that as a way.
We're petitioning or suggesting that in order to meet the broadband authority's goal of universal access. Prior to the end of twenty twenty-five. That any remaining ARPA funds that are not encumbered at this time. As well as any general funds that are not encumbered, that are within the office's control. Uh, be transferred over to this project.
We've got the balance that is reflected in our consent agenda. If you'd like to have have your hands on that money too.
Well, it is for the good of the community.
No, 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 I'm not questioning the motives. I just, you know, the the effect is you'd like to get all the pennies in one.
To to further our fiber builds into the rural areas of the county.
Do you need a commitment from us at this time, or is that something we can pick up at a subsequent meeting? It's an appropriation. I'd like to have, you know, the appropriate language on an appropriation. You know, a movement to. To set effect.
And and per Ms. Gardner, just wanted to just point that that request at present would be a letter of commitment. Um, to those remaining funds that would enumerate the value of those funds and then. At the point where. The. The grant is to be executed. All of the funds would be consolidated in a reappropriation request to the Board of Supervisors to. Uh, just bring it under one budget code, so. We we certainly have time, but that would be ultimately the the current ask and it would be a subsequent request. To reappropriate the funds.
To make sure I understand explicitly what you're talking about. You're looking at basically the ninety-one thousand and change that we still have on the books and committed.
Yeah, right.
Just to get a sense of the authority. When we stand on that, all those who think that might be a good thing we would commit to this project, say aye.
Question, I mean, I'm I'm supportive of of that, these funds. But a question that that would be helpful is to ensure that there's not concerns of any overreaches. For the existing commitments, as long as we're good, that that, you know, we don't need to hold back. Eight percent or something for twenty-one.
Good question.
Then, then.
Experience is the treasurer will make good personally.
I mean, presumably you don't actually need the money like tomorrow. You just need to know that it is available to be committed.
And then it has to be a board of super interaction too, so.
So what we could do is commit in principle to any unspent funds that we have. Going to that, because literally what else would we do with it, like?
I'm not even asking that question now. I'm just asking, is, you know, anyone got any red flags on the play at this time?
Uh, other than I think that very good point that.
Yeah, sure.
We want to make sure that we're only committing what we have, but I I can't think of a better use of.
I had, I had the same concern you did. Is there anything that we need to hold back, but other than that?
We just have it sit there.
This could cut into the Christmas party. Jim, I I didn't see you nod your head or do anything.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm I'm good with this. I mean, I share the same concerns, but it all sounds reasonable.
Okay, so that's where we are right now. We're, we're, you know, sort of think we're, we're there with you and let us know. Okay, so that's where we are right now. We're, we're, you know, sort of think we're, we're there with you and let us know what we need to do next.
I may report out on this one, just to let the board know.
Absolutely. Okay.
Thank you broadband authority. And we will keep you informed.
Exciting work.
One's good.
Applications in. Ah, broadband authority. Accessibility. Yay, 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 on best report. Okay. Who's who's got?
I will, I will, I will try to be quick. I want us to get out on time. So three items we're going to cover first. Beat volume two and the five-year plan, digital inclusion week and hiring ACP navigators. DATD released their five-year plan and the initial proposal volume two. The initial proposal volume one has been submitted. However, we're not going to get a chance to see the final version until it has been approved by NTIA. Volume two is open for public comment. Public comment is available until I believe September fourteenth. We've enclosed a copy in your packets and sent it digitally. So we do recommend that the authority submit comment where they have it. We have begun preparing our own public comment that we will submit and we will share that with the authority once it is ready. The five-year plan is a document that does not require public comment and it establishes the overall. Vision for beat funding as well as discussing some projections. The administration's priorities are established as well as again, expectations around beat funding. And DATD at this point is projecting about a billion dollars in deployment cost. That includes about seven hundred. That includes about seven hundred million dollars in beat deployment funding. As well as nearly two hundred million dollars in future kneecap funding, which while not explicitly stated, suggests that they do plan on using. Beat funding for an expanded form of their line extension customer assistance program. We believe that this will be a considerable overestimation. We believe that there, that these projections are on the far side of actuality. Just to ensure that they have planned appropriately for deployment spend. Any remaining funds after deployment for unserved and then underserved has been obligated. Will go towards non-deployment and that includes activities to be presented in the Commonwealth's Digital Equity Plan, which is still in process. They received an extension to January, but they plan on releasing it for public comment in October. The initial proposal establishes the processes for accessing deployment funding, including a timeline scoring. And then reporting and operational requirements. And it also describes the non-deployment activities expected to be funded. These roughly align with a lot of our hopes when it comes to digital equity spending in the future in our community. And that includes device distribution, digital navigators and digital literacy programming. And the scoring is certainly interesting. The B program requires that primary criteria comprise at least seventy-five percent of the score. But allows the Department of Housing Housing and Community Development to determine what the actual weights are in that category. For the minimal bead program outlay, that's all of the statutory requirements there setting the weight. I'm sorry, all the statutory statutory requirements and cost effectiveness. They've said that at forty-five percent of the total score affordability, that's affordability to the. The community member is twenty percent and then fair labor practices, they set at ten percent. Speed to deployment is in a category that they were told must be given some amount of weight and they've set that at five percent. And then the local participation, it is known as, is considered an optional criteria. And the weight of any individual component of that cannot exceed the weight of any of the primary criteria. So. Right now, it is set at broadband provider has consulted local government or made three attempts at such. And that gets them ten, ten points and then broadband provider has received letters of support from local governments and that receives ten percent. We will be suggesting, and we are open to recommendations from the authority, an alternative. That would perhaps establish the consultation as a, a. As minimal effort to receive partial credit of full twenty. And then tiering within that to provide the Department of Housing and Community Development. Options for providing partial credit across a range of of suggested options.
Just to clarify a little bit, so that there's no confusion. Body twenty-four and the bead volume two, a lot of people are, you know, understanding them as. Application processing. So we've always done body as an application process. B volume two is also going to be an application process. The primary difference is that Jason has put up here is that. With body, you have to partner with the locality. With B, any provider can come in and claim a specific location and they don't have to address it with the locality. So that's the purpose of trying to get a little more detail on how we're going to have funding. Percentages applied to when a local government or agency is involved. Yes, sir.
Can you define what consulting means? Does that mean funding or? Or literally a meeting with a locality?
In the language, it defines it as a meeting with. And a, and the identified appropriate stakeholder within a local government. It also recognizes three attempts at establishing such a meeting.
As good as a meeting.
That's really a bar, I mean.
We agree and and certainly we think that that's a bar that should be scored appropriately. It shouldn't not be included. But the other thing that we think would be appropriate for DATD to consider is in the event that a provider has made. Three efforts establishing a meeting, that DATD should place itself in similar to a technical assistance role, a mediation role. Trying to get a hold of the appropriate stakeholder within the community, which might not be the. The local government, it could be just a public champion, a broadband authority, a business or the Chamber of Commerce. I think there's a lot of different options. But I do think that the meeting, the requesting of meeting certainly should be the lowest bar possible.
I followed closely Rappahannock's. Broadband expansion such as it is with multi-county thing at all points was the vendor there. And it was a close thing. It looked very much as if Rappahannock was not going to vote for something that would cost them literally nothing. A rich dude in the county was like, I'll provide the match. I'll put up the money. And they were still like, yeah, I don't know. Sounds kind of new fangled, this broadband thing. I don't know if we're ready for this here. It was infuriating watching some of those meetings and and reading the the press summary of it. So I absolutely appreciate. Why there's the need to say, look, if you can't get them to return your phone calls, hey, you did your best. But there was a real chance that there was going to be no broadband extension. It came down to one guy's vote, like he was in a good mood that day or something. It was, it was rough. So I get why they do that, because we're getting to the point where counties that do not have very much coverage at all. In part, it's because as we were hearing in Rappahannock, well, if federal dollars are just trouble, let's not get tax money. Let's not get any of that. That's just a waste of money. No, it's already happening, man. The money's already happening. The money's spent. Are you going to benefit from this thing or not? But they don't get it. So I understand. It's just, of course, a poor match with a place like Alamo County.
As as it relates to our recommendations for the county considering pursuing future funding opportunities. Obviously, we're awaiting the results of the ARPA grant proposal, which could take much, if not all of it off the table. We've already discussed with DATD submitting a challenge of covered areas. Of uncertain areas in the event that we are at an agreement in terms, but perhaps not at a sufficient obligation that they can just. Remove those locations as they've defined them. We're still suggesting that we, the body twenty-four window for applications opens in a few weeks. Mid-September. Our recommendation is to hold any process until we have the B challenge process completed. The window does not close until nearly the end of December, which gives us considerable amount of time to consider an RFP. For any remaining areas after the ARPA proposal. That would suffice both as a request for a body twenty-four. Partnership, but also be the vehicle by which providers can request a. Letter of support. We believe that that process would meet all of our procurement obligations. And it would consolidate the process into a single process rather than waiting until providers come to us at their leisure to request letters of support. Moving on to digital inclusion week, so this is an annual event to spotlight digital inclusion activities. It is organized by the National Digital Inclusion Alliance, of which the office is a member. It goes from October second through October sixth. And we have a lot of things planned for that, for that week. We hope to be releasing our digital equity plan for public comment. We hope to have announcements regarding pilot projects with community partners. We are also looking for announcements related to ACV Bridge as well potentially as the ARPA Grant. And we had placed a request before the board for a proclamation on digital inclusion week. I'm happy to to circulate that once the language for that has been finalized. And there happens to be a meeting on October fourth, so we're hoping that that proclamation will be read out on. At a, at a meeting during digital inclusion week. Any questions on that? And then hiring ACP navigators, as you all know, all the way back in January. We applied for a grant from the FCC, their first grant process, which might be one of the reasons why the shake, shakeout for this has been a little long. But we were awarded and we were able to finally accept that award at the end of June. And begin the process of lining up our funds and starting to do activities. And the first of those is to hire our first ACP navigators. These were at the final stage, hire two of them, candidates are going through reference checks and final selections. These are going to be part-time positions capped to twenty hours a week. And they're going to be embedded within our community partners and doing work within the community to provide outreach and application. In-person application assistance for the ACP program. We are going to follow this with an RFP for marketing outreach that will focus on digital display ads and SMS texts. Which have reliably proven incredibly effective at even people that lack a home internet connection.
Could you give us examples of some of those community partners could potentially be?
The library, the Jeffersonary Board for Aging. The center actually just joined in our at Belvedere. We also are looking at expanding our partnerships with other communities and particularly other community organizations, including affinity groups like. Seen by us.
Great, thank you.
And that's all on that.
Well, that brings us to new business. Did you have any new business? Good answer. Are there any other matters? Something someone's been dying to get off their chest? Think we're good. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved. Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say nay. Hearing none, we stand adjourned. Jim, thanks very much.
Thank you.